Okay, 7:28, I will call the Committee to Hold Meeting for February 12, 2018, to order. First item on the agenda is the conditional use application, 2018-01-202, Edwards Avenue.
Can you maybe jump right back into it?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna read this and then we'll begin the discussion. And Randy's got a little word here about she wants to move.
That's fine.
Okay. Conditional use application was submitted by Manitoba Housing and Bob Jackson to permit a homeless shelter for 202 Edwards Avenue. The public hearing took place earlier tonight. Due to budget constraints, Paul Friendship Center decided to close the homeless shelter. A group was informed and they were able to work with the Paul Friendship Center to continue operation for the winter months in order to give the working group time to come up with a plan. The town was approached by Manitoba Housing for conditional use to permit a homeless shelter at 202 Edwards Avenue. Conditional use must attach conditions in which applicant must follow. Administrative staff has brought forward some questions which they will be included part of a conditional use for the property. These include fire and building inspection as a change in use from office setting to actual occupancy, an approved set of plans including survey and building plans, a development agreement which sets out mandate mission and scope of plans which would include operations and layout of the project. This would also include plans on how the organization would address the loitering, etc. There's also the concern that we as a town have received nonstop complaints in the downtown commercial area of loitering, disorderly behavior, and damage to property, and that the location being in the middle of the main area of town would enhance the already difficult situation. Fisher and Edwards are considered our core business area, and as much as this is a conditional use in that zone, it does not necessarily fit in with the surrounding businesses. Since the announcement of this proposed location has received... Sorry. Since the announcement of this proposed location, staff has received an incredible amount of calls against the location. However, people are afraid to voice their concerns, as it is perceived their comments will be seen as racist rather than what they believe to be the real concern. As the CIO, I'm speaking to Randy, I cannot in good conscience support the approval of this application based on the concerns expressed by the public. I recommend that council only consider approval of the conditional use application, subject to the submission of acceptable overall plan which meets the concerns brought forward by the community. And then Randy can just drag down if you know what I mean, or we meet those now if you want it.
No, let's hear them.
Problem has been ongoing for years as to lack of housing has increased greatly with a lot of new and younger people from outside communities. The original shelter was built in a location which abided commercial property but was close to residential property. Business owners in town are experiencing issues with persons harassing their businesses and patrons. We are considered an application which moves all the traffic into the heart of the commercial area. I do not believe this is to be the best location and suggest the Oscars Place Board, Manitoba Housing, and Atlanta of Paul work together on identifying a location which would best suit the use of a homeless shelter. This includes the existing location.
Okay. On the table.
I think we need to go backwards, although we need to sit down and have a meeting with like the Friendship Center and the stand-up for Oscars Place group, have the province there, and even somebody from the federal government if we can accomplish that because the reality is that the building and the location that they're at is the most ideal location in the community in my opinion. So I think that we need to do what we can to try to advocate towards that and to see if some sort of compromise or resolution can be made between the groups in order to see that happen. And then, and only if then, have we been, you know, told no and know 100% that that is never going to happen, that we start looking at something else. Because again, like to me, that's just, it makes the most sense to have it there and until I know 100% that it can't go there and it, that seems logical and reasonable to me, which I don't know how it would, but yeah, to me, I just, there's no better location than what's already there. The building was built to, for that service. It was, you know, the funds and the people have already come together and I just don't think it's, yeah, that's another location.
Okay.
That's the recommendation is to move in. Obviously, we have plans available if they wanted to build a building, but...
I'll vote against it. I don't think it's the appropriate location. Even if, even if I felt like stand-up for Oscars, Manitoba Housing, and whatever other stakeholders need to be involved had a great plan together to be dealing with, you know, providing the hand up as opposed to the handout, I still don't think I would approve the conditional use for that location. I just, it's too close. It's right across the street from a guy that just invested a million dollars. Even if he hadn't invested a million dollars, it is right smack in the middle of where all of the traffic is, and I don't think that's the right place. I don't even think from any, I mean, and Harold pointed to that fact, they know that that's not a great location. For the clientele even, being in a high-traffic location like that is not gonna be, it's not gonna create good relationships for them. I mean, if, even if the best programming or place, it's not the right location. The right location is where we're at right now. If that means that, I mean, Chad, you sit on the stand-up for Oscars board, so if we need additional leadership supports out of here to help make sure that the right stakeholders are at the table and the rest, it's fine. I don't consider it a municipal service, but I think it's important that if the community demands it, as in the community at large, that as a municipal government, we show leadership with it, but it's not infrastructure. And so, on its face, I won't support this conditional use application. For other conditional use applications that might come forward, if they don't have more and just, we just wanna provide overnight sheltering to start, I'm not gonna support it either. I've gotta see more than that.
Can I make one comment? A conditional use isn't about, that's the problem, they weren't required to submit that kind of information, because all a conditional use is about putting that type of business in that location. That's all a conditional use is.
But they would've had the right words, homeless shelter, right? Because that's what it is.
Yeah, a homeless shelter.
Yeah. And so, I mean, I think, well, my point, my point still stands. If all the, if that was all they put on the thing and I had all the hard components there, I still wouldn't approve it. You know, so if, if there wasn't information being provided, just no, we're just telling them we're putting a homeless shelter and that's it, I would say no. That's just where I sit with it.
Anybody else? Alan?
Nope, go ahead.
Sure?
Yeah.
I agree with what everyone's saying. Also, Edwards has seen some challenges over the last year and with the loss of the gateway, but at the same time, that provides a huge opportunity as far as commercial development, right? And further on in the meeting, we're gonna talk about tax increment financing and then whether other locations, but that downtown core is an ideal section for that. I mean, so we have a huge opportunity. You have almost an entire block that could be developed to something if you had some leadership and a plan. So to go and say, we're gonna provide a conditional use, I think that's counterintuitive to what, not only what we heard tonight, but what the potential that location has.
Okay. Brian?
Oh, yeah, I agree with what everybody's saying. One thing I notice is the people that making the request are not the ones that wanna offer the service. It seems to me like the request is so I can sell my building to these guys, I need to get the conditional use changed, then it becomes valuable to, to the group that wants to buy it, but then they don't wanna operate it, they wanna pass it on again. So, we, we don't know whether or not you, one, if we did agree to it, you would just end up with sitting here doing this all again in eight to 10 years anyway. But more importantly, I, I think the, the need, as has been pointed out, for keeping business in our, in our downtown core and not having a homeless shelter in a building and situation where it doesn't have any outside, to my knowledge at least, it has no outside space. You've got no place for them to, you know, if they're waiting for the doors to open, we know they're gonna wait on the street and that sort of thing. So it creates that whole environment where, where people that need the service, yes, but they will be interfering with businesses and other things in that area, and we do need to keep that. Having said that, it's unfortunate that there wasn't some sort of interim process. If, if the current owner of the Oscars Place building is, is saying they have to go, then then there is gonna be a void where there's, there's nowhere for them to go for service or they'll have to find a temporary, so that you know. Whether or not anybody can do that, I don't know, and whether or not they've looked hard enough for other options, still has to be determined. And as one gentleman said in the meeting, we shouldn't be driven by somebody else's agenda, because that's where we, my fear is, is we start making poor decisions for the town and the community we serve in the long haul. And we're here to support those that would use Oscars Place, we're here to support businesses, we're here to support our citizens. I think we need more information, I think we should delay in trying to make any decision one way or another.
Chad?
Um, like I've been involved with Oscars Place, Stand Up For Oscars Place, kinda since the beginning here, and I've seen the challenges that, that have come forward. The fact that there almost wasn't a building in October, and then there was able to be a lease that was negotiated so that it could continue operations, but we've been handcuffed, or the group has been handcuffed by the fact that, you know, there isn't, there isn't a stable building for, for the continued operation of, of shelter services in this town. So there, it, it makes it very tough to, to come up with additional programming, additional supports, and that sort of thing. We've kinda, or the group has been kinda flying by the seat of their pants to just keep, keep what was operating before still operational. And I think, you know, I'll be the first one to say that where the shelter is right now is the best place for the shelter to be, and, and it makes the most sense, because that's, that was a purpose-built building and it's there, you know? It's, 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 it's in the downtown, but it's, but it's a little bit off of the beaten track, it's, it's closer to the residential, it's, you know, it's, it's probably the most suited building there is in town for, for the, for the operation of a homeless shelter. There were other, other buildings that were looked at, and this was the most readily available, that a deal was able to be put together on it. You know, so Manitoba Housing is in a tough position because there is a desire within this community to, to have a homeless shelter. You can see it with, with the campaign that's been going on with the Huskies and, and with Stand Up For Oscars Place, like there, there is a community need and there is community support. And I understand that there isn't community support for moving that service to 202 Edwards Avenue, and that's abundantly clear by the people that showed up at, at the public hearing tonight. But at the end of the day, come March 31st, as of right now, Oscars Place has nowhere to operate out of. So if 202 Edwards doesn't work, and if its current building doesn't work, then where are these services gonna be offered? And I think that as a municipal government, we need to, I don't know if we necessarily need to take the lead, but we need to be involved in the discussions of, of what's gonna work, and I think that's, that's what we have to show leadership in, in coming up with a viable solution.
Can I ask, Chad, so what, if the doors close on March 31st, what's the real consequence of that? I mean, outside of the, well, we don't offer those services anymore. What's the extended consequence of that? Like what, if that forces, if one of the consequences of that is that it forces everybody back to the drawing table? Because right now, I mean, here's my perspective on it, and I haven't been involved, and I appreciate the volunteers, and that's what's going on, and I think that's awesome, I think the Huskies are great for doing, you know, it's an awesome show of citizenship by a group of young people. But sometimes it's easy to get stuck in fixing your crappy car all the time, trying to make it run, because you think you need it to run, and what you really need is for it to just completely be unable to work anymore so that it is gone, and then you're forced to reckon with finding new wheels. And I feel like when Oscars Place, you know, when it was announced it was gonna close, it had shifted so far off of the mark where it was originally designed to be, or that facility was designed with a specific purpose, and it eventually evolved into overnight homeless, emergency overnight homeless sheltering. And, and I don't feel like that was driven by a need for that. I think that was driven by some poor decisions that were being made at board levels, or people were trying their hardest maybe, I don't even know the whole story, but at some point, the resources that were meant to be offered there stopped being offered, whether because the money ran out, or money was mismanaged, or people ran out as in the volunteers required or whatever. And then it shifted into, well, we gotta do something, let's just bring people in. And so, any of the checkboxes that were in existence about how that was assisting the community, the community at large, not just the community of the homeless people, the community at large, are gone once you're into that, into that area. I feel like it might not necessarily be the worst thing in the world if on March 31st the shelter is forced to close the doors and, and then the community at large has to decide what it wants to do. You know, and I don't, and I don't know that, I see the tremendous support for the Huskies and the Good Deeds Cup, and I don't know that that represents the tremendous enthusiasm for supplying emergency overnight sheltering. I think that shows tremendous support of a community looking at a group of young people that are really engaged in citizenship, and that's awesome. It's an excellent opportunity to do it, it's fabulous. I support it. And the fact that the money might go to the, to Oscars Place to assist the shelter is great, couldn't think of nothing better, but I don't know that in the largest picture, that's the best strategy for the community in how to deal with the issue. I don't, I just simply don't know that that's the case. Even the show of support out here tonight in opposition to where it was gonna be located, it's easy to be like, wow, we got 15 people here opposed, the community must really not want this to happen. That's just the vocal opposition. This is a community of 5,000 people, you know, 1,800 voters or however many voters it is, and 15 people showed up. It doesn't necessarily mean that because you've got a vocal group in front of you that that actually reflects the desire of the community. That's something that I always try and temper my perspective with. So, I think, you know, I mean, I don't wanna, I wanna be careful not to devalue the work that people are putting into it. I just wonder sometimes, it's easy for the blinders to go up and feel like, what, this has to be the answer, because that's all they can see. And what you need is for somebody to come along beside you and pull the blinders down and, and force everything backwards for a minute. So, I just, those are my thoughts on it.
I'll agree with you that, that emergency overnight sheltering isn't the answer. That's not, that's not gonna get anybody to the end goal, right? The programs need to be offered, the, the services need to be offered, and my biggest fear is that if it does, if it does cease operations on March 31st, that we will have a bigger mountain to climb when it's time to reopen something, right? If there's nothing there, it's easy for there to continue to be nothing there. And if you keep coming up with, with grand plans, while they're great, if there's nothing there to, to piggyback on, I'm afraid that it just, it just might not ever happen. So now, that's my concern.
And so maybe that's where some, you know, leadership from within the community, so there is this excellent facility that the Friendship Center owns, this asset that the Friendship Center has that can work in some capacity. And, you know, maybe it takes complete closure and shut, like shut down or whatever, to allow for some mediation of relationships, for some navigation of experts into the right places. Because there is, it's not that there's nothing here, that facility exists. I doubt that the Friendship Center's gonna come up with finances to do something different with it. Like, you know, they're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna, I doubt that they're planning new programming for it that they're gonna fund, it's an asset they have, they're gonna lie, we're gonna have to rent this to somebody, some, to somebody soon because we gotta pay bills. So there's, I think there's an opportunity there somewhere, if the conversation can be handled in the right way maybe, I don't know, I don't know the complexities of the relationship there, but I agree. If, if the operational funding goes away, yeah, provincial government, sometimes it can be tough to get it back if it's gone once. But Manitoba Housing's sheltering, funding for operational sheltering is on Manitoba Housing's list, period. And if a group stands up and says, hey, we wanna do this, just like they have here, I mean, you, you guys, you had no asset, and they showed up and said, we can give you money for funding, we can even help you with capital. So, I mean, I think if the community desires there, and it's able to be navigated in such a way that that facility that's known as Oscars Place is able to come to the table with a group, with a plan, I got a hard time believing the province isn't gonna come with access to resources. Maybe it's not exactly there, I don't know, but you know, I mean, I...
And I agree one step further, we sort of touched on this, so they have an asset that they're gonna have to start paying bills on when they leave. You have, you have like a grade A, double A plus tenant, and you're saying sayonara. Though you're, you're, you still gotta pay all your, your bills, but no one else is gonna pay that kind of money, guaranteed. So I don't, I, I think, we don't do a good job, not just us, but I think as a community we don't always do a good job. We're always putting out fires, right? Someone comes, we're gonna put this here, we bought the building, or we've done this, you guys fix it, right? Like, and I, that's why it was a little uneasy tonight, I wish we could've had the discussion before with the Stand Up For Oscars Place, and I know we talked about it, it didn't happen, but we've gone to the next step instead of like getting everyone together and sort of doing that. So if we have an opportunity to do that now, I think that now's the time to do it, to get everyone in a room and say, hey, what's going on, right? Because you guys aren't gonna get a tenant as good as these guys. We, the community seems to want this service, I don't think there's any question about that, but the, the questions around location.
Maybe can we ask, because we have the tri-council meeting next week, so I think that like the three governments should come together, and if we have to be the ones who kind of take the lead to bring people together, but exactly what I said, like everybody needs to come to the table, and until like we hear, like, for me, like until I hear from the Friendship Center, we are not gonna sell you the building or you can't use it, and these are all the reasons why, and whatever, like to me, I just can't move past like an option, like I have my blinders on and I won't be able to take them off until like, to me, like, it just, to me, like, that's a logical solution, right? So, explain to me why it's not logical and I can move on from there, so...
Have a moral, like, whether it's federal or provincial, gave you a building, right?
Yes.
For a dollar, and then you're gonna turn around and sell it back from the group, not Manitoba Housing, but I mean, a, a federal or government body, you're gonna, they're gonna buy it back from you. Someone should be going to those, that group and saying, uh, this, this isn't right, right? You're, you're hijacking the situation here, for lack of a better term.
Well, and not only that, but like you said, it's an asset that's costing them money. So it's like, to me, like, like, I mean, I know that they're a nonprofit, but they're still a business, they're a business that's registered as a nonprofit. So to me, if you have an asset that's bleeding money and you have somebody who's willing to buy it to cut off the bleeding, it just, to me, it doesn't make sense that you wouldn't take that, so like what are the other barriers? And that's what I ask, like what are the barriers and are there things that we can do or try to advocate or, or approach the provincial and federal government to do to, to get the ball rolling? Because I, I mean, aside from what Chad said about how if it closes, it could be extremely difficult to get it back up and running, if it closes on March 31st, we have winter here, sometimes until June 1st, what if somebody freezes to death? Like, that's my fear, somebody froze to death in Winnipeg last week on a park, park bench, like, I don't want that, like on my conscience that we could've done something to, to try to mediate that or to, to advocate to keep that from happening, and like, to me, to just wash your hands clean and say like, well, if, if it closes and then we go back to the drawing board, like, that's a scary game to play, and that's people's lives you're talking about, like, that's not your car, like, those are people's lives who don't have anywhere to go, and if it closes on March 31st, they might not wake up on April 1st, is a reality, like, it's not something that, I think it, we need to request a meeting like ASAP and bring these people together, and like I said, it's Trappers Festival, we're gonna have all sort of federal and provincial politicians in town come Wednesday, and that could be the perfect time to get this on the radar.
Chad?
Just, if the conditional use gets approved, there's no way they will have authorization to rent a homeless shelter in there by March 31st for 202 Edwards. After this is approved, then it's gotta go through the variation, and that would be another month, month and a half, for the variation process. Then after the variation process, you're gonna have a fire inspection, and that building the way it is right now is not set up to rent a homeless shelter inside. And Manitoba Housing has been made aware of that, so I'm just, even if this conditional use is approved, it's still not gonna be, 202 Edwards is still not gonna be approved to rent a homeless shelter out of it by March 31st.
So maybe the action of this then needs to be that we make the formal request to the Friendship Center and to Manitoba Housing, to me, set a date in the next week, or whatever, to, to talk more than just 202 Edwards, but to talk the larger plan, the larger ideas, and, and understand what the issues are on the table and see whether or not there's anything that can be resolved, you know? I mean, I find it hard to believe that solutions can't be found, to whatever the, whatever the limiting factors might be in, in that building or that asset not being available, are, let's get them on the table, nobody gets to hold them secret and, and just say, no, I don't wanna tell you what the limiting factors are.
Does that mean though we have to deny or approve the condition tonight, right?
Yes, we have to, we have to.
We have to do a factor.
So it's, it's like the consensus is on the table as I work on it.
I might have a mortgage you want, I don't know, I might, I might.
Brian?
Do we have a clear understanding of what the requirements are with regard to space and yard or not yard, or how many feet do we, you know, we have rules for...
That doesn't, that would be a variation. You have to approve the conditional use before you get to that side of it.
Just like the...
Yeah, but what I'm asking is, what are the rules, when to get to that point? Tell me those rules so I know whether I wanna even go there, because if, if the next thing you run into is, oh, the building's too close to the property line, we need another variance and they need, or those kinds of things. So there's a lot of other, you know, it's kinda like, we're, we're doing this process and we only isolate one thing at a time, and then we don't understand what we just did when we get the end of the process.
There is a whole nother lot there, right? Just so you know, right beside it, there's where the building is, and then there's a whole nother lot right beside it.
That's yard space.
That's yard space.
Yep.
Okay.
With two half...
Half.
Sorry. But just...
Yeah, I would have to see a survey there, you can, when Manitoba Housing applied for this conditional use, I had suggested that they do the conditional use and the variation all at the same time. So we have all the information and you could do your public hearing for both, approve the conditional use, you move into the variation right after that. They didn't have all the information to process a variation yet, so they just said, no, we'll just do the conditional use so we can purchase the building if the conditional use goes through. They didn't have the information...
No, they, they, this has been the shortest timeline I've ever come across, ever. It's just like, and you need to get it all done, and you need to get it done by, by this date. And, and so, everything that everyone has said here is, are the reasons why I certainly won't be supporting this conditional use. But the, it, we have an opportunity here, like I mentioned earlier during the public hearing, I've been going to homeless shelter meetings for a decade, and nothing, I mean, nothing ever happens, ever. People get all punchy about it come election time and chat, 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 and then it's back to where it is. We all know, sitting around this table, we've heard it enough, that the, the, the homeless person that's in our community tonight is different than the homeless person that was here four or five years ago. I mean, there is security at every ATM, there is security at, at Alan's place, there's no security here. We have locks on our washrooms, digital combination locks, they're not allowed into the library anymore, they can't use the washrooms in the museum, there's not a business in town that'll let them, it's a different, it's a different person. I, I tried this afternoon at 4:30 to get into the post office, and I just, I just gave up. I just gave up. So, there's a lot bigger issue. Nobody seems to wanna tackle the mental health issue, nobody seems to wanna tackle the alcohol issue. John Morton said tonight, can we find out where they live and work out some sort of system that maybe they could go home? Nobody's prepared to look at that because everybody's afraid that it's gonna come up as some sort of a racial comment, when all we do is care about the people in our community, all of the people. Those that are less fortunate and those that are very fortunate, we care about all of them. But I am no longer going to support taking a tiny skinny little Band-Aid and try and put it over this big AP movement. We need to come up with a plan that's going to do more than just provide a place for them to sleep. They need, they need help, they need help, and we should be able to sit down and have that discussion. In the short term, I think it's, I think it's absolutely critical that the town take the lead on this and get Manitoba Housing and the Friendship Center at the table. That's the location, everybody said, it's the location. And so, for whatever reason, it's not happening, I think we need to find out what that is and see if we can make it happen. But as this sits right now, there's no way that I would be voting in favor of a conditional use on that property at that location. We're, we're about to discuss growing our community. We're about to have that discussion in a couple of minutes, and this does not grow our community.
It does, it does grow our community. It's part of growing our community, because...
At 202 Edwards.
I, maybe not at 202 Edwards, but coming up with a solid plan, this is gonna help to grow our community. So, to say that it doesn't grow our community is, isn't right.
You know, I, I, you're right, but it doesn't help grow our community by locating it at 202 Edwards.
For sure, I'll agree.
Okay, I'll make that, okay? Anything else?
Okay.
Okay, so I will be bringing a resolution forward at the next meeting.
Right.
And the resolution will be for approval of it, and then that's how you vote.
And we defeat it at that time.
Yeah, right. And then the town is teeing beyond getting Manitoba Housing and the Friendship Center. And then the town is teaming up, getting Manitoba Housing and Friendship Center together. The town will facilitate it.
Absolutely.
And then I think it would be helpful to like invite the, like OCN and the ARM. I mean, if they don't come or they can't send somebody, that's fair, but again, again, it's a regional issue. And we should have all three of our, the governments at the table. A message from all three of us, I think, is stronger when we're advocating.
Norm Watt, yeah. Norm Watt has nailed it tonight, you know? Get all your, all your best real estate together, our CNP building place, MBI builds a place, it's just like.
Do you want me to, so you want me to send that letter out now or do you want to bring it up at the tri council?
No, 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 that's, that's, no, that's. Yeah, yeah, well, Brian, sorry. Now I forget what it is.
Sorry, Brian.
Okay.
Just one quick, on invitees, the chaplaincy.
Yes.
One thing that's always boggled my mind is we spend what, 20,000 here on the chaplaincy and they have overlapping services. So if they're, they should be part of the solution as well. I'm not sure if we fund any other groups that are, would be there just be the only one.
Yeah. Yeah, Brian?
Um, I was going to say, um, do we have a movement in the secondary for the motion going forward?
I don't know. We'll, we'll have papers put in front of us, uh, the next council meeting.
Well, in this case, I don't think that's good enough because I think if we don't have somebody that, that wants to move it and second it, then.
We'll be the executive.
I think that, I don't think you'll have an issue finding people moving it and seconding it. So.
There you go. So you're in favor of it?
No, we'll defeat, we'll defeat.
What Brian's saying is you don't even have to bring it, if, if, if the sense is, I don't want to put words in your mouth, the sense is that everyone's not going to vote for it. Does it, do you need to pass something to bring their motion forward?
Yes, I think you do, because we, I see the conditional use application and we need to vote on it.
They've requested a conditional use agreement, so we have to vote on it. And so that's what we will do at our next council meeting.
Is there a time limit on it? It has to be voted on at the next meeting or it could be tabled till we get some more information?
But isn't the consensus?
No, our, our, I believe our plan is to.
I don't need any additional information.
Pardon me?
I don't need any additional information.
Okay, there you go. That's the quick, that's the quick.
With respect to the conditional uses, 202 Edwards, I don't need additional information. So, and it's been brought up as a hearing as a conditional use, it has to come to our table for some kind of resolution and vote. So bring it at the next council meeting so that they know precisely where we stand.
I can't see the ever being in favor of 202 Edwards. I'm sorry.
I'm not a hundred percent sure what the municipal act says, but I know what we tell applicants is that it will be at the public, they'll have a public hearing and then it will be discussed at the committee of the whole and the council will vote on it at the next meeting. So that's kind of a process that we've been following for these hearings. So again, not written in the municipal act, but that's the process that we've been following. So it has to be.
Yeah, I'm not, I, 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 for me, there's no reason why I would want to, I would want to table it.
Okay, I guess, I guess my question is then, does this, like, if, if no one here wants to move it and second it, do we have any reason to have a resolution?
But moving it and seconding it, seconding it is only to get the issue on the table, Brian. It's not voting.
You should bring a mirror vote. Doesn't matter.
It's not, it's to get the issue on the table so then you can vote on it.
You can be in favor or against it. You can move it and second it. It's, that doesn't reflect it.
Most, you can, then, then this council, we can spend all this time talking about things you don't care about.
Oh, my goodness.
You know, but what I'm saying is if nobody's going to speak in favor of it, then why would we be entertaining it at all?
Because you have to vote on it and our plan is to vote it down. It's, we're required to vote on it. They've asked for a conditional use. We've had a public hearing. We've had a discussion and at our next council meeting, we will vote on it. And we're, by, by what I understand, what I hear tonight, is that we'll be voting against it. And then the vote will be taken. It'll be defeated and we'll move along.
So then is, is it, is that going to mean that everybody's going to stand up and, and have a say on the resolution? Because of the importance of it to our community and everybody involved?
Absolutely. If you want to have a say on it, absolutely. You're more than welcome to stand up and, and speak to any motion at any council meeting.
What I was, was asking, if, because we have a tendency to have a discussion here in a committee and then take the general consensus and take it to your council and just vote. I'm asking, are we going to, you know, are councillors going to stand up and if you oppose it, stand up and say why? And that, so the public gets the whole story of whatever the decision is.
You are, you are, you are most welcome to stand and say what you should. I, I will likely speak. I will likely speak against the motion.
And I can obviously say anytime anyone here has voted against the resolution, they have provided the reason why.
Yeah. I don't see this as any different. Okay, okay. So what's this, a land development initiative? What are you talking about?
The town has been looking at ways in which to increase the tax base and create a competitive tax rate which improves residential and commercial development. Council has directed the CAO to engage in a services and way to go consulting to create documents necessary to build special levy for policing services. Council has also directed the CAO to prepare a plan that would target the development of vacant lots in order to increase the tax base. Um, council, a resolution will be required that council approve the development initiative, which is attached, dated February 1st, 2008, as prepared by the CAO. And the information packages will not be released until March 1st, 2018, on first come, first served basis. This is to provide fairness as packages will be released at the same time. And like I said, lots will be first come, first served.
First served.
And the, the package that will be released on March 1st, 2018 will be more intact than this. There'll be more information in that.
Right.
This is just to get it on the table.
Comments?
I still think we should sell lake lots for more than residential lots. I'm sorry, I just have to say that.
I'm sure you're fine.
I still think we should be selling the, the lake lots for more than the in-town lots because I just feel like we're really devaluing the cost. I agree with the discount and stuff. That's the only one thing that, um, Santa Fe is.
I don't agree with the lake lots.
And we're the same price as the residential lots.
What Crystal's referring to is one, one of the items here is all, all lots, all town lots will be sold for, at a cost of a thousand dollars, including lake lots.
Other than that, let's sell some lots and get some developments going.
Other comments?
Can we just now move forward finally with this?
I'm hoping so.
And so just kind of also, I mean, for the public over there, so how the special service levy works, is that, that the, oh, sorry. I thought it was all the same thing. Well, it's, yeah. It's all the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So, so we, we, as a, as a community, I think, I, as I said, I think we have, we have three options. We can, um, reduce services that we offer. Um, we do, um, if you get around Manitoba or Saskatchewan in the wintertime, we have to clean the streets. You know, maybe we can cut back some service. Maybe we don't have to offer, maybe we can, you know, do, do some things. Or, um, we can raise taxes to pay for these services. Or we can broaden our tax base. And so, uh, what we're, what we're hoping to achieve here is to broaden that tax base. Uh, uh, spur on some confidence in the community. Uh, you know, a big part of, uh, when you're, when you're building a new home, a big part of the cost of that new home is the land that it sits on. So if we can help eliminate that, uh, and, and spur on some, some development, some growth, then, um, we think that that's the way to take our community, that's the way to grow our community. And that, and we have been, um, we've been talking about this, uh, for a long, long time. And, uh, I'm just really pleased to see us moving forward on this. Uh, we have, uh, I don't, I really don't even know how many lots we have. Um, the number is probably somewhere around, doesn't even matter. The point is, is that, uh, these lots are currently earning us zero dollars and zero cents. And so it's time that they, uh, it's time that, it's time to deal with it. And so that's, that's what this is about.
And for, for me, the biggest thing is that we're paying debentures on lots in Wood Acres too. So the whole community is paying for lots that are sitting vacant and have sat vacant for quite a long time. There's huge costs coming down the line for those lakefront lots, like it or not. So we can keep them at the same price and not sell any, right? And that's great, but you talk about reducing services. We think we have a problem now. That problem's going to get steadily worse and worse if we don't start dealing with the issue. So it's not maybe the ideal situation. I get it. But if we don't move it, we're going to have bigger problems. So, I mean, for me, that was the deciding factor. We're, we're paying for this stuff already and that's what gets lost in the shuffle. Taxpayers are paying for these developments already. My personal thing is that municipality is sort of like what you touched on tonight, Andrew. We should not be in the development game because we're not very good at it, right? Like, but we take on these big developments and like, everyone's going to rush in by them. We've proven twice with those two developments that that is not what happens. So again, to me, this is to help offset some of the costs that are happening, that we're going to incur regardless of whether we sell any more lots or not.
The number one comment I get every year at tax time, uh, is, I saw in my taxes this year that I'm paying for Wood Acres too. And it's there every year. Every year. And so let's get that, let's get that handled and, and move forward. Brian?
Yeah, I was going to say, uh, having, having so many, uh, properties that, that we're not gaining revenue on because we're just sitting on it, hoping to get the big dollars, far better to do with other communities have done. I think on and all, they, they sold lots, um, right outside the riding mountain. But they've got big houses on and they're gaining tax dollars and, and revenue. Uh, but they, it was a bit of a fire sale thing. They needed to get people to build on them and use them. If we use the same approach, uh, there's a greater chance that people will take advantage of it and they will build on them and we'll collect the revenue accordingly and our community will grow. And that, and that's part of that, uh, image of growing, which is another side benefit from encouraging people to buy them.
Absolutely. Anything else?
So bring a resolution forward to approve the management mission.
Okay, where do we go next? Um, where am I at? Where am I at? Where am I at? Yeah, 3.3, uh, Community Development Corporation.
Counselor Gabe brought this to my attention and he would like to know when council would like to meet with, or when council would like to meet with CDC. Um, in accordance with the agreement between the CDC and the town of the call. Section 11 says the CDC will present quarterly reports of its activities in finance to the town by the second Monday of January, second Monday of April, second Monday of July, and second Monday of October. So.
Next meeting.
That's fine, but going forward, because technically we're supposed to come and ask, right? And we're going to meet and we have a meeting and then to set the meeting.
But you don't technically have to ask.
But so why don't we, but what I was just going to say, what I talked about with the CAO, why don't we just, if we know the schedule for the next, until now to December, set the dates, right? Circle the three dates. I don't know if we have to set it now or between now and the next meeting. We'll say, yes, I agree, the next meeting should be one. And then here's the next one, here's the next one, here's the next one. So we don't have to, to do this and it just starts flowing. Because now that we actually have a director in place and everything else, things should start being a little more consistent.
So the second Monday of April would be April 9th, which would be in accordance with the agreement.
Sure. So if you want to go through, like, if it matches up, doesn't match up, I don't know.
Yeah.
Pardon? I think we did second Monday of each month because that's when we have council every second Monday.
Perfect. That was fine for me.
Can we set a time? Why don't we set a time?
Or if you don't want part of the whole.
There we go.
Oh, yeah. Okay, never mind. Yeah.
Last time, did they? I thought we had like just the name of the CDC.
I think that she comes to me.
That was.
That was something different.
Oh, and then you did it in council to citizens period.
Okay, committee.
That's how we're going to do it? That's great. Just now it's.
I will send you the meeting date. So April 9th will be the next one.
Okay. 3.4.
After, after the next meeting.
You wanted to come next week.
Or we probably should because we didn't do it in January, right? So now January and then, then April.
Then in April.
February 26th and then April 9th.
Yeah, and then whatever's after that.
July, June, July.
I guess we only need one, so July.
Well, that's what we need. All right, 3.4, variation application, uh, 2018-02-913, Costant Avenue.
So I.
Yeah, that's okay. Don't get caught. Maybe wait.
So the town has seen a variation application, 2018-01, regarding the height of a grad and the public hearing scheduled for January 22nd. The applicant was late in attending the public hearing, therefore the public hearing did not occur. The applicant was advised that he would have to reapply, which he has done. So the next public hearing will be February 26th, 2018. And this is just as information.
Yep.
And he has been advised to make sure he is here in the event of the town.
Yes. Yeah, it could be a misunderstanding, so.
Yeah.
Um, all right. Uh, airport subdivision, councillor Gabe.
So we've talked about the airport subdivision and just to start, this is by no means to do a development like we just spoke about. But if anyone ever wanted to come and purchase land in our community, we couldn't facilitate that. Something arose that that might have happened or, it's not even on the table anyways. Because it's, if you look, it's in big square chunks. My understanding is that the previous council looked or started the process and then walked away because they looked at the full development cost. What I'm saying is do it almost like what Manitoba Housing is doing with the section by UCN. Come up with, here's a plan. Map it out and there's certain costs involved with that, where the CAO mentioned that would be in the 10 and 20,000 dollar range. And then we have it set up if someone comes knocking, right? It doesn't include the development cost and, and everything else that goes along with it. But at least if someone came today, if Jim came today and said, I want to buy this section, we'd have to say, that's great. We're going to do a plan for you. It's going to take about 18 months to two years and then we'll talk then. And so we've, we've lost that opportunity. The second part of that, and it touches on what I said earlier tonight, we should really have someone from the province come talk to us about areas in our community, whether it's Edwards, areas at, at Clearwater Lake, where we can apply tax increment financing. They use it in Winnipeg quite successfully. I'm sure we could use it here. It helps rebate not incremental tax, not on the municipal side, but also on the school tax side, the student fund. And when you look, uh, like at the railway siding at the lake, if anything ever happened there, you could probably pay for the development cost through tax increment financing. There's a way to work it. It gives you another tool in the, in the toolbox.
Yeah.
To me, there's no reason why we shouldn't be looking at doing it and seeing where it can apply.
Well, I've been in favor of this for seven years, so you got my vote. I, we had a potential developer block away because we weren't prepared to move on.
And again, I'm not saying we have to put, you know, sewer and water and nothing. I'm not talking about a road or something, but you need to have the plan in place.
Work them off.
And there is, um, eh, kind of a dream out there. Um, I've seen, um, I've seen a lot of, uh, papers on it, but it never, it never materialized.
Again, I think some of the, where we fall down as a community, someone comes up with an idea and everyone jumps at it and we do it. Whether it's maybe the right idea, like everyone gets excited, it's development, so it gets done. But there's no plan in place, right? You know, you look at how, how, just how the town generally is laid out. Here's an opportunity where I have a big space. Now's the time to lay it out. Here's how it should work, right?
Yeah.
Might take 50 years to get there, might never get there, but at least you have a plan, right?
What do we have at the airport right now? I mean, we have this subdivision plan in place, so it will be.
There's, there's the railway siding, there's the area by Paul's.
And those are registered subdivision plans. So what you're talking about is developing a new plan, but not registering it or developing it and, and, you know, deregistering these, whatever component, and reregistering a new plan?
My understanding is just register a new plan, but I'd have to check with again.
Or are you talking about just kind of developing a concept and having a.
Well, Ryan had that exact.
I think we let that lapse.
Yeah.
Did we not have any registered subdivision there?
Because it didn't happen. Because you guys, you guys walked away from it. You weren't, you weren't interested in developing that gun.
For whatever reason.
Probably that former guy.
There's still be lots of question about, about how that land gets allocated. I mean, there was issues of leasing versus purchasing.
But what I, I wouldn't even say we get into that discussion. Like we're just talking about like mapping it. You're trying to map it out, like the earth count's going to think before you get 10 strokes ahead and say, and then we're going to do this and we're going to have a series over. No, 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 like, let's not.
And that, that's included for zoning by.
I don't want to talk about, just like, we're taking the small bite out of the elephant, right? Let's start.
Yeah, like we got chunked out into like 10 acre parcels, I think, and some five acre parcels. Working all the way down to the, to the railroad. So.
And you're right, the CAO said that's, it's off the, it lapsed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Really would be the, the initial phase of what has worked on.
So just, just to be clear then, what are you, what are you asking?
So we're going to finish what we started.
Yeah. Take all the credit for it and say, look what these guys can do and look what we could do.
Oh, it was the thing that you guys didn't want to finish, so we started.
Yeah.
I get it.
Okay, so.
And then back to funding, even though it wasn't a large amount, but there, with the airport reserve, there's almost 400,000 plus dollars there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this would be the next step in looking at developing that area.
Right. Still not clear what we would like council to do about this, to, at council meeting.
We're gonna have to, like, if we wanna do it, like, we're gonna bring forward a resolution. Do you wanna do it to get?
Does anybody not wanna do that?
Should we, not that I don't wanna do it, but should we maybe wait until we have budget conversations to make sure that there's money available and what account and stuff it's going to come out of before we bring a resolution forward? Because that's probably something that's gonna have to be figured out before we bring a resolution to spend the money, right?
Right, but I just brought up, there's $400,000 in the airport reserve.
Oh, right.
I think that's a direct line factor.
I, it can be part of budget process as well.
Can we spend that from the airport reserve? Can we spend that, or like, what's that?
I'd have to check with the grant.
I just assume.
I would ask a question like that before I throw it out there, but that's.
Okay. Good stuff. All right.
Payroll accounts.
Yeah, okay, payroll accounts. Sorry, throw it back.
We need a resolution in the amount of $705,988.37. In the notice, there are a number of payrolls on here. They were not submitted on time, could be included in the previous disbursement reports, which is why there's four of them here. There was $42,000 for STICCO, which was key for all the town facilities. And I can't say straight, thank you, for Jetstone at the airport, which came out of $35,300. And that was approved, already approved through a tender, so those were just the higher ones.
Okay, resolution required. All right, okay, that's, we're moving on. 4.2, amendment to bylaw number 4564.
So this was basically just housekeeping. Back in November 2017, council passed bylaw 4564, which was to close the public lane in the Red Rocks Park. But when the lawyers were doing the land transfer, it was discovered that the town was providing with the wrong legal description for the legal link. So we need to amend the bylaw to show the right legal description, and then we'll need to amend the purchase agreement to show the right legal description. We stole a non-existent piece of land, apparently.
Well, if we could do that on a fairly regular basis, huh?
Did we already get the check?
Oh, yeah. So it's just housekeeping, but because it was a bylaw, it's gonna have to, it's gonna be amended, and it's gonna have to require three. It doesn't have to go back to the province or anything. It's just basically, it's a housekeeping. So that was coming forward.
We did a couple lines, maybe we'll just help.
Maybe. 4.3, the Local Vehicles for Hire Act.
So the Local Vehicles for Hire Act, which was the Taxi Cab Act, will come, or, sorry, there was no act, I'm sorry. Local vehicles for hire will come into force on February 28th, 2018. Within this new act, motor transportation board no longer has any jurisdiction over the vehicle for hire industry, which has now been put on all individual municipalities to look after. However, the town already had a very comprehensive taxi cab bylaw, and with a few changes, this bylaw will cover the new act. So basically, the only changes were to change taxi cab to local vehicles for hire, and our, our bylaw already covers more than it requires.
Okay, so we don't really have to do anything.
Just change, just do the, which I showed, showed here.
Okay.
And it'll have to be for secondary meetings, so it's just as in housekeeping.
Yep. 2018 election polling subdivisions and election workers.
Polling subdivisions for 2018 election. I've been looking at them, and I've been suggesting changing to five polling subdivisions to two. Polling subdivisions are done through a bylaw. In the past, there's been five polling subdivisions. One at the Sam Baller, one at the Hall Regional Library, one at Kelsey Elementary, one at V C N, and one at M B C I. Each subdivision had three workers. The total cost to pay the subdivision workers in 2014 was approximately $3,000. Considering a person can vote from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., these five polling subdivisions are not very busy throughout the day, so, and it is not cost effective to have less than many people sitting around. I'm suggesting only having two polling subdivisions, one at the town office and one at the arena. Each polling subdivision would still have three workers. Both facilities are user-friendly and easy to access, with lots of parking there, and no cost to the town to use. This would be a savings of $1,800 in wages and $200 in medical fees. Two of this. In the past, it's been very difficult to find workers for the election. It is a very long date, as they have to be ready to vote at 8:00 a.m., voting closes at 8:00 p.m., and then they have to do the campaigning after. So it's usually a 14-hour day from beginning to the end, and the town currently pays $200 a day. I'm suggesting that if we change to two polling subdivisions, that we increase the wages from $200 to $250. I've looked at what other municipalities pay, and the town was the lowest, at $200. So council's in favor of this. I'd need a resolution for the amendment of the polling stations for the bylaw and amendment to change the wages for the.
My only concern, my only concern is that with only two polling stations, is that gonna create a bit of a bottleneck between six and eight hundred people normally go vote?
In talking to previous workers, there is no super busy period.
Okay. If you're going to vote without a dime.
Obviously, even if it was super busy, what's the logic? You have to wait for 15 or 20 minutes, maybe?
Yeah.
You can go to the gym, and you can come back, right?
Oh, see, here we go.
Okay.
I'm thinking like, it's a different place.
No, they're there.
May not vote because they're out. I mean, oh, this is my voting station here, and it was just.
I don't have any issue with that. Fine, fine. Yeah. Saves some bucks.
When you mentioned, you mentioned the arena as one of them? Oh, where would, where would you have it set up in the arena?
The lobby.
You'd have it set up in the lobby. And there, and we have tables, and we have, like when you go to U C N.
Purpose room, too. There's lots of room there.
Could do the blue shots there.
Yeah, we can, we can block, and you've got your boards where you can't be seen when you're voting, and.
Democracy.
Yeah, because you're competing with kids and with other, other things which is a thing.
Yeah, and like, you go to U C N.
It's one day every four years.
Kelsey School is another voting station, that's in the lobby.
Schools have a little more control over the kids in the arena, that's all. But anyway, I'm just wondering how it's gonna be. But you're obviously using the lobby, wherever the schools are.
Yeah.
And so if the land gets long, it gets long.
4.5, handyman, mobile, mobility disadvantaged transportation.
Taxes are funded by the transportation program, 2017 annual operating report, which must be submitted to the old government, so municipal finance and advisory services by March 1st, 2018, to obtain funding under the program for 2018. This program provides an annual operating grant of $20,000 and a provisional second grant of approximately $4,000. This is just an annual, I think it's the regular ones, making it their funding, and council has to sign off on it as being the, as being the organization that will cover the deficit if it was.
Okay, so, does anybody have a problem with that? I don't have a problem with that.
Every year.
All right. Thank you. 2017 annual operating report. Oops, sorry. My mistake, my mistake, my mistake. 4.6, Manitoba 55+ Senior Games.
Kelsey Recreation and Town of Kaua has received a request from Charlotte Kane and a group of volunteers seeking a letter of support to improve with their bid for the paw to host the Manitoba 55+ Senior Games on June 18th, 19th, and 20th, 2018. They are specifically looking for in-kind usage of the Winton Pool, Roy H. Stansumina, wellness center facilities, the duration of the games. In the summer of 2008, the Golden Ageers, with the help of many organizations and volunteers, hosted a very successful Manitoba 55+ Senior Games here in Kaua, with approximately 1,500 participants in attendance, and they are looking to do it again. Manitoba 55+ Senior Games purpose is to engender a sense of community spirit by bringing older adults, their families, and the community to participate. Please note that this letter would only be to support the bid application, as actual details for the timeframe and use for each facility has yet to be determined. They do however require support from the municipality to submit with their bid application for games. It's a good, and Maddie is advising a community event, town to support. She's in favor of the town supporting the applications for grant dollars and funding if necessary, and a letter of support. So just basically letting a noble destination marketing and all the other places.
We'd like to send a letter of support, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
We're doing resolutions. Some of these are.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, public hearing for special service levies.
This is what Crystal was talking about when we were talking about the land development initiative. There was a public hearing regarding special service proposals. Bylaw 4569 will be held on Wednesday, March 28th, at 6:00 p.m. Notices will be posted in the next week. In the above issue sheet, 3.2, land development initiative, it is mentioned that the town had engaged in the services of way to go consulting to create the documents necessary to create a special levy for policing services. This has been done, and the next step is to hold a public hearing in this regard. And I will let, Crystal, if you wanna continue with explaining.
So pretty much what we're gonna do is we're gonna take the cost of policing and divide it fairly amongst everybody, so people will pay the same amount for policing costs because if you call 911, the police are going to come to your house, no matter where you live, or how much your house is worth, or what it looks like. So in an effort to try to broaden and make the tax base more fair, one of the things that we decided to do was special service levies. And again, in the, in the spirit of fairness, police costs, again, are one of those things that everybody should pay for because everybody has access to it, and everybody has the same access to it.
These are also uncontrollable costs. We have, we have zero control over the cost of the R C M P being here. They sent us a bill, and so that bill is being spread out throughout the community. Anytime we're gonna come across a cost like that, I'm controlled over, we're gonna be looking at the same, at the same process. Anybody else?
So those levies will be for the 2018 tax.
Maybe just to be clear that this isn't an additional tax. This is something that exists in budget, and it is simply being pulled from the normal way that that budget is assessed out to property rolls and being created as a special levy and then re-submitted or repositioned on the taxable.
Right.
And further to that, that's consistent with what Flynn Flynn does, they do the exact same thing. And we outlined this, what, three years ago in our strategic plan?
Yep.
And I believe the R A M just recently had a public hearing, doing the same with.
There's what, 40 across the province that are applying for special services?
It's a way to level the playing field between all the property owners and the town of Kaua. So I think it's something that everybody can get behind. And it's an easy decision because it's a cost that, that everybody shares. Like Jim said, the police don't come any quicker, no matter what you pay for property taxes. So why should you pay any less or more based on what your house is worth?
Okay.
And that was just for information.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. What is next? Let's see, let's go around. 5.1, policy, P912, sympathy slash congratulatory message.
This was just an amendment to clarify, it's our sympathy and congratulations messages, or gifts that we send out for immediate family. It was just to clarify the definition of immediate family. The policy existed for some time. This is to fine tune when gift basket flowers should be sent during an event and to who. It's defined to, to define immediate family members. We just took the definition from labor, the labor standards definition and incorporated it into the policy. So it's just an amendment.
Okay.
Once again, housekeeping.
Yep, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Resolution required.
Nope. Can I have a beer? Do you want to see a camera?
I don't have a camera.
What the heck are you talking about? I have secrets. Thanks, guys.